You may have your worldly pleasures, your silver and your gold. You may pile up all the riches that these old workers hold. But I'd rather have my Savior and with him firmly stayed. For I want to be ready to meet him in the glory land. I want to be ready to meet him by and by. I want to be ready to meet him in the sky. Oh, I want to be more like him and do his blessed command. For I want to be ready to meet him in the glory land. You may talk about your riches, your damos and your pearls. You make in the wealth for ages of this and all the world. But the Savior is more precious, with him I'll take my stand. For I want to be ready to meet him in the glory land. I want to be ready to meet him by and by. I want to be ready to meet him in the sky. Oh, I want to be more like him and do his blessed command. For I want to be ready to meet him in the glory land. There is one thing I can boast of salvation from the fall. And I'm yet to wealth in glory, my Father holds it all. That is why I'm shouting happy and go at his command. For I want to be ready to meet him in the glory land. I want to be ready to meet him by and by. I want to be ready to meet him in the sky. Oh, I want to be more like him and do his blessed command. For I want to be ready to meet him in the glory land. You may talk about your riches, your damos and your pearls. You make in the wealth for ages of this and all the world. But the Savior is more precious, with him I'll take my stand. For I want to be ready to meet him in the glory land. I want to be ready to meet him by and by. I want to be ready to meet him in the sky. Oh, I want to be more like him and do his blessed command. For I want to be ready to meet him in the glory land. You may talk about your riches, your damos and your pearls. You make in the wealth for ages of this and all the world. But the Savior is more precious, with him I'll take my stand. For I want to be ready to meet him in the glory land. I want to be ready to meet him by and by. I want to be ready to meet him in the sky. Oh, I want to be more like him and do his blessed command. For I want to be ready to meet him in the glory land. There is one thing I can boast of salvation from the fall. And I'm yet to wealth in glory, my Father holds it all. That is why I'm shouting happy and go at his command. For I want to be ready to meet him in the glory land. I want to be ready to meet him by and by. I want to be ready to meet him in the sky. Oh, I want to be more like him and do his blessed command. For I want to be ready to meet him in the glory land. You may talk about your riches, your damos and your pearls. You make in the wealth for ages of this and all the world. But the Savior is more precious, with him I'll take my stand. For I want to be ready to meet him in the glory land. I want to be ready to meet him by and by. I want to be ready to meet him in the sky. Oh, I want to be more like him and do his blessed command. For I want to be ready to meet him in the glory land. There is one thing I can boast of salvation from the fall. And I'm yet to wealth in glory, my Father holds it all. That is why I'm shouting happy and go at his command. For I want to be ready to meet him in the glory land. I want to be ready to meet him by and by. I want to be ready to meet him in the sky. Oh, I want to be more like him and do his blessed command. For I want to be ready to meet him in the glory land. I want to be ready to meet him by and by. I want to be ready to meet him in the sky. Oh, I want to be more like him and do his blessed command. For I want to be ready to meet him in the glory land. Buddy, welcome. Thank God. It's wonderful to see everybody here. I think just pretty much every single face is a familiar one, but it's not too often that I see all of them at the same time. Thank God. Welcome, one and all, to Madison, Wisconsin for our weekend of special meetings. We thank God for that prelude. We want to be ready. That's what this weekend is all about, getting ready in the glory land. Before that, we heard "Will Jesus Find Us Watching", that Brother of the Neeser played. And a quick pop quiz. Anybody know the classical piece? The name of the classical piece? I don't know if you count either, Sister Stephanie. Go ahead. That's right. "Jesu, Joy of Man's Desiring". Let that title sink in. Jesus is the joy of man's desire, whether people know it or not. My wife was just sharing with somebody this evening about how one sister here in Madison, her first Midwest camp, was like asking somebody, or somebody else was sharing, maybe it wasn't me, maybe it was Sister Melissa was sharing, "Why aren't you people shouting this on the streets?" This is what everybody, whether people know it or not. This is every-- Jesus is the answer to every good and holy desire. And we're going to see Him face to face. Everybody. The Bible says, "Every eye will see Him. Every knee will bow." Now is the day of preparation, when we're getting ready. So that's, as I say, that's what this weekend is all about. And we thank God for the music ministry, but this is going to be now our turn, our time, to worship God in praise and in song. So let's-- you can either see it on the board or if you have a hymn book handy, you can turn to page 62 and read about-- or not, read about sing, "When the Roll Is Called Up Yonder". It's a good way to start this weekend. "When the Roll Is Called Up Yonder", that will be our first song in our song service this evening. Excellent singing. We want to continue that thought. "I believed the true report". Can you say that? Amen to that? That's where the victory comes, when we believe the true report. That's 4:47 in our hymn books. 4:47, "I believed the true report", and we'll sing all four verses of this song. "I believed the true report". Hallelujah to the Lamb.
You may have your worldly pleasures, your silver and your gold. You may pile up all the riches that these old work can hold. But I'd rather have my Savior and with him firmly stayed. For I want to be ready to meet him in the glory land. I want to be ready to meet him by and by. I want to be ready to meet him in the sky. Oh, I want to be more like him and do his blessed command. For I want to be ready to meet him in the glory land. You may talk about your riches, your damos and your pearls. You make in the wealth for ages, for this and all the world. But the Savior is more precious, with him I'll take my stand. For I want to be ready to meet him in the glory land. I want to be ready to meet him by and by. I want to be ready to meet him in the sky. Oh, I want to be more like him and do his blessed command. For I want to be ready to meet him in the glory land. There is one thing I can boast of salvation from the fall. Am I near to wealth and glory? My Father holds it all. That is why I'm shouting happy and go at his command. For I want to be ready to meet him in the glory land. I want to be ready to meet him by and by. I want to be ready to meet him in the sky. Oh, I want to be more like him and do his blessed command. For I want to be ready to meet him in the glory land.
Buddy, welcome. Thank God. It's wonderful to see everybody here. I think just pretty much every single face is a familiar one. But it's not too often that I see all of them at the same time. Thank God. Welcome all, one and all, to Madison, Wisconsin for our weekend of special meetings. We thank God for that prelude. We want to be ready. That's what this weekend is all about, getting ready in the glory land. Before that, we heard "Will Jesus Find Us Watching", that Brother of the Neeser played. And quick pop quiz, anybody? Anybody know the classical piece? The name of the classical piece? Ah, yeah, I don't know if you count either, Sister Stephanie. Go ahead. That's right, "Jesu, Joy of Man's Desiring". Let that title sink in. Jesus is the joy of man's desire, whether people know it or not. My wife was just sharing with somebody this evening about how one sister here in Madison, her first Midwest camp was like asking somebody, or somebody else was sharing, maybe it wasn't me, maybe it was Sister Melissa was sharing, "Why aren't you people shouting this on the streets?" This is what everybody, whether people know it or not, this is every, Jesus is the answer to every good and holy desire. And we're going to see Him face to face. Everybody. The Bible says, "Every eye will see Him. Every knee will bow." Now is the day of preparation, when we're getting ready. So that's, as I say, that's what this weekend is all about. And we thank God for the music ministry. But this is going to be now our turn, our time, to worship God in praise and in song. So let's, you can either see it on the board or if you have a hymn book handy, you can turn to page 62 with the hymn books there and read about, or not, read about, sing, "When the Roll Is Called Up Yonder", it's a good way to start this weekend. "When the Roll Is Called Up Yonder", that will be our first song in our song service this evening. Excellent singing. We want to continue that thought. "I believed the true report", can you say that, amen to that? That's where the victory comes, when we believe the true report. That's 447 in our hymn books. 447, "I Believe the True Report", and we'll sing all four verses of this song. "I Believe the True Report", hallelujah to the Lamb. Thank God. That can be everybody's testimony by the end of this weekend. Thank God. All right, 435, just a few pages back. As glorious as our experience of God is in this world, it's just the foretaste. We literally can't imagine what we have to look forward to. I was just sharing this evening about our dear sister Erica Brockett of Blessed Memory, those from Madison here and many, not from Madison, will remember her, and how before she passed away, she had a vision of heaven. And she said, while she was still her on earth, she said, "If you just see that city, you know it's worth everything. It's worth everything. Oh, that will be glory", will be our next song, 435. What if it were today? It could be. We might never leave this building horizontally. We might leave it vertically. I mean, that really actually could happen. We don't know one way or the other, but we know it could be today. 613, "What If It Were Today"? What if it were today? Amen. If it could be today, if it could be tomorrow, what do we do? What do we do? How do we be ready? We need to draw nearer to God. So our song before prayer this evening will be 192, sorry, not 192, 193, "Draw Me Nearer". And we'll stand on the fourth verse to be let in prayer afterwards. 193, "Draw Me Nearer". As we look to the Lord in prayer, we'll ask Brother Jeff Downey to do some.
Our precious heavenly Father, we're so thankful for this opportunity. We have to be in your house tonight, Lord Jesus, we're so thankful. Your presence we feel in this place, Lord, and truly, that is the desire of our heart, Lord, that we'd be ready to make heaven our home, Lord. If you should come tonight, Lord, we want to be ready, Lord, to meet you in heaven above, Lord Jesus, and we just pray. Lord, as the service goes forth, Lord, just draw us each one nearer to you, Lord. Move our hearts to that place, Lord, you can fill us to full and overflowing, Lord. Lord, move us to that place where we say, "Lord, I just give it all to you", Lord Jesus, we believe, Lord. Oh, that you can do great and mighty things right here tonight, Lord. For us, the remainder of this service, the special music, Lord, the testimonies, Lord, the preaching of your word, Lord, just let your anointing be upon it in a mighty way, Lord Jesus. We thank you, Lord. Oh, we come before you, Lord, we just praise. We gather around the altar in a time of prayer, Lord. Oh, meet us in a mighty way. Open the windows of heaven, Lord. Save souls, sanctify holy, fill with your precious Holy Spirit right here tonight, Lord. We come giving you all the glory and praise. We ask these things in the precious name of Jesus.
Well, welcome again, one and all. We thank God for everybody who's able to be here in person. We thank God also for all of those of you who are joining us online as well. I really appreciate, seriously, everybody who's here, especially from out of town. I know it wasn't easy. We live here in town, and it wasn't easy. But the Lord will bless. The Lord is here to bless in a mighty, mighty way. I mean, it will go far beyond, you know, all the challenges that we face. The challenges that we faced being here is just because the devil knew what great things God had in store for all of us, and here we are. In spite of any attempts of the devil to try to hold us back or try to discourage us, God has brought us here and God is going to fulfill all His purposes for this service. I just want to give you a quick rundown before we continue with our service of what we have in store. So apart from this meeting tonight, we have a teaching service tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock in the morning. So that'll be our first event here at the church tomorrow morning. And then after that, there'll be a luncheon served at 1:00 PM. Fear not, the teaching is not going to go for three hours. But just so you know, that's the schedule, okay? So you'll probably have time to go back, maybe refresh up or socialize and just right here at the church. So and then there'll be an evening service on Saturday, tomorrow at 7:00 PM. So this started at 8:00, of course, but tomorrow night it'll be at 7:00. And then we'll have Sunday School begin tomorrow at 10, or sorry, tomorrow, Sunday at 10, as befit Sunday School, 10:00 AM. And then that will be followed by our Sunday morning service at 11:30. So again, we thank God for Brother James and Sister Christy Tumbila here from Wharton, New Jersey. And he's going to be bringing us the Word this evening. Pray that God will anoint him and anoint our own ears and our hearts to receive the Word. to receive the word that God has for us. And that God will pour out, we know God will pour out his blessings, but it doesn't hurt to keep praying about it. So we're going to have right now one of the best parts of the service, which is our testimony service. I'm not doing any object lesson or anything. I'm just making sure I have my act together here. So we have a special song to open up that testimony service tonight. Choir is going to sing "I Can Almost Hear the Sound of the Trumpet." And that will open up the time for testimonies. You may hear somebody up here testify, just because they're already by a mic. But go for it. This is, the accent sort of shifts from here to here as far as the sound goes. And it's open to any and all to testify. Now, I'll tell you, I'll be honest, I'll be real with you. If you go over two minutes, we will not play you down. Nevertheless, that's not a fact to be exploited, but a fact to be honored and respected, okay? So there are a lot more people here than you may normally have in your, in an evening service on Friday evening. So they, and lots of people want to testify. So be sure that your testimony is to the point and let as many people testify as possible tonight. So that'll open up. "I Can Almost Hear the Sound of the Trumpet." And then Sister Christy Tumbila will sing "Too Late to Pray" as the last special before the message from the Word of God. So I'm going to get out of the way so we can hear these testimonies of victory of what God has done for us.
I want to thank God this evening for the power and the blood of Jesus. I thank God that I was born into a Christian family, but that doesn't make me a Christian. I remember when I was around 13 years old, God saved my soul. He sanctified me and he baptized me with his Spirit. I really thank God for what he has done for me. I thank God for planning my life as a teenager. God planned my life, and God gave me a wonderful husband. I really thank God that I'm standing here this evening to thank God for the power and the blood of Jesus. I thank God that as a child of God, he can lead us. I remember four years ago, when we were having our meeting, God already convinced me that I had to change my career. You know, I was just telling God, I had to go for my certification, you know? Already I'm a master in another field, but I really want to, God really helped me to want to follow him, even though at the beginning it wasn't easy. So I had to go for my certification and like four years, I said, "Okay, we have a special meeting after the special meeting." You know, after the special meeting, I went for it. God surprised me, he passed me. The first one, the second one, even though that was challenging, but God was there with me. I really want to thank God for that. I also want to thank God that I remember this car meeting. I want to change my job. And, and I was in a car meeting, I still don't know, and the school year is going to start like maybe two or three weeks' time. I still don't know where I'm going to be. You know, God can be dependable. I remember that was a point, I was thinking, "Okay, I already opted for substitute." We started praying. You said we wanted the best, and that was what God did. I want to give him the rest of my life, pray my strength to God.
For the power and the blood of Jesus, I praise God during a meeting like this. I was invited to a revival service in one of the branches of this church. And somebody testified that if somebody has not given his heart to the Lord, is within the hook of the devil. And the devil can deal with that life the way he wants. But if one is saved, one will be free from the tentacles of the devil, that he cannot command you to do anything again. I thank God for that evening. I confess my sins to Jesus. I asked him to forgive me. Jesus forgave me. He gave me salvation. He filled my heart with joy. I thank God that salvation through it, Jesus has done a lot of things for me. He has healed me. He has made my knees. Whenever I call unto him, he has answered me. I want to thank him for the rest of my life. Do you know one of the things that that person said that day? And I find it true. And it's further, when you are saved, the devil cannot just push you around. He can't just tell you, "Go and do this, go and do this." You can tell the devil, "No, I'm not going to do this." That's what that salvation did for me. I praise him for the rest of my life.
Amen. Praise the Lord. Amen. I've been meaning to testify, so I thank God for giving me this opportunity to testify. I was born not into a Christian family. My parents were Catholic. But I thank God that in 2021, the Lord saved my soul. He conquered me, and I began to cry. I asked God to forgive me. Eventually, he forgives me, saved my soul. Then earlier this year, after our winter Tabernacle meetings in Portland, the Lord sanctified me and filled me with his Holy Spirit. But I really want to thank God for sanctification, for the power and sanctification, because when I was saved in 2021, you know, I struggled with a sinful heart. You know, every time I'd be going to, "Lord, forgive me, forgive me," I struggled with something, you know, bitterness and all that. But when God sanctified me earlier this year, it changed everything. You know, he brought a lot of peace to me, you know? He gave me the power to be able to live a holy life, you know? I remember, you know, testifying, even after that, to my family, I was like, "Now I'm a complete Christian." Because when I was saved, you know, having to battle that sinful heart was tormenting. But when God cleansed my heart and sanctified me and made me holy, it was a wonderful blessing. So I just want to encourage anybody that is here. If you're saved, you're not sanctified, I really encourage you to seek that blessing. It's a wonderful blessing, and I give glory to God.
I just want to thank God this evening because of the blood of Jesus. I want to thank God for the power to save. It was my parent that went for a concert, and they gave them the Light of Hope magazine. And that Light of Hope magazine was sitting on our table. I read it, and the testimony of a young man convicted me. That person is one of our brothers still in Washington, DC. And I wrote to Portland, and I was told that right in your city, somebody's, the church is there. I went to the church. I prayed. Jesus saved me. On the 24th of April, 1994, he saved me. I became a brand-new person. I praise the name of the Lord. My life would have been a mess if not for the salvation of God. And as I was sitting down here, God prompted me to testify about it when I was still very young. After I got saved, I had one dream. And I was committing fornication inside that dream. I woke up, I was crying. And the Spirit of God said, "You do not get saved in a dream. And you don't lose your salvation in a dream." He said, "But if you don't stop going to the house that you normally visit and play with your friends, you will do exactly what you see yourself do right there." I, I kept my distance, and that protected me. You know, I want to thank God because God speaks. And he speaks in language we can understand. And I'm so grateful that this salvation has kept me all through challenging times. It is my prayer that God that has kept me thus far. He's going to keep me, he's going to keep my family and the family of God, and I want to make it to heaven. Praise the name of the Lord.
I want to thank God for saving my soul tonight, for carrying me through, for growing me up in a loving Christian family. Thank God for saving, sanctifying me, and filling me with the precious Holy Spirit.
Okay, is this better? Good. All right. I want to thank God for saving, sanctifying me, and filling me with the precious Holy Spirit, for moving me here to St. Louis to start a new job working over at an awesome company that I never thought I would ever get the chance to work for. And I just have God to thank for that. I mean, he's the, he's the discerner, he's the guider of my life. Just continuing, I just want to continue to praise him. And with all the different challenges in life, new challenges, new unforeseen challenges, and with all the struggles with my communication, I've been able to grow. And, and how I was able to grow is I was given a bunch of new challenges in order to continue growing in that. Yeah, I just want to give him all the praise.
Thank you for sanctifying me and filling me with the Spirit of God. I want to thank God because it's always a privilege and something that blows my mind when I see myself among the children of God, that that's a privilege. I just want to thank God for it and for all that he's doing in my life. I remember the last special meeting we had here. I was, I was having, I had a job, but I wanted to change that job. And I remember one of the people of God praying with me out there for God's favor concerning a particular job. And you know what? That very one didn't work, but the exact company that is a competitor to that one that I didn't plan at that point, that is where God took me to. And today, I've even changed another one. And at a point, I even had choices. And after looking for a job for so many years, I want to thank God that there is nothing impossible with God. Even when we have given up on whatever happens, I want to thank God. He has done so much for me. He has blessed me, he has blessed my family. And to be called a child of God, that's something I can never compare with anything in this world. So I just want to give God the glory and praise him. Please pray my strength in the Lord.
I also want to thank God for everything that he's done for me. I want to thank God for safe travels here. I want to thank God for saving me, for sanctifying me, for filling me with his Holy Spirit. I'm currently in a transition period in my life, and I, for how God has been just directing my life and working things out for me, I want to give him all the praise tonight. I completed my first week at my new job today, and I'm so thankful and how God is working everything now. And I know God has a plan for me, and I just want to trust him and hold on to him and see it to the end and draw closer to God. Please for my strength in the Lord.
I also want to thank God this evening. Sorry, it's good to be back in Madison. Yeah, I remembered, well, this morning I woke up. I had forgotten, and then I checked my phone, and it's actually today's date last year that I left Madison. And, you know, all the testimonies that have been said this evening is just pointing to me, you know, that God is dependable. He's been dependable for me, you know, in my life. That God, you know, gives jobs. He's a miraculous God. I remember I prayed here on this, you know, altar of prayer. The men of God, they prayed with me. I remember, because at that time, it was really, really tough, right? Because so many things happened. I applied for, you know, the EAD. My application was rejected. In fact, I was like, "Oh, maybe this is the last lap. Maybe I need to, you know, go back to where God brought me from." But God in his infinite mercies, you know, made a way. And then it was a miraculous job. Like, I don't know, I do not worth that kind of job. Like, I know, I know what I was hoping for, but what God gave me was, you know, extraordinary. You know, I, I, I give God all the glory. You see, it's good, you know, to give one's life to God. Just follow God's leading. Yeah, and then, yeah, God saved me. He sanctified me, filling me with the Holy Spirit. I remember, you know, a couple times, I believe it's the Spirit of God, you know, led Sister Antonia, you know, sing this song. And I was, you know, sort of repeating the songs, you know, submission. And I was always singing, I sing this Sunday, then two Sundays to come sing it again. And then I didn't know, you know, God was really, really using that to talk to me like, "You have to go my way, not your way." I was hoping to go somewhere else. In fact, okay, I came from Minneapolis today. I was praying for Memphis, Tennessee. That was what I was praying for. But then, to the glory of God, you know, he said, "I'm going to turn up north." I give God all the glory. So God has been keeping me, God has been guiding. I underestimated Minnesota code, because, you know, I came from Wisconsin. And I was like, "Wisconsin too, we have, you know, some level of code." But then when it's really, really, I don't want to say dealt with me. So, but I thank God for God's people. They rallied around around me, and then the Lord healed me. And then, you know, so many times that I've been sort of sick. And then it's a bigger city there in Minneapolis. I give God all the glory. The Lord keeps, the Lord guides, the Lord directs, the Lord instructs. Please, I invite you. Please, I invite you, this God that is here, please come and serve the Lord. He will bless you. Please pray for me, I've not done anything for the Lord. I want to be yoked together with Him. I want to go in His direction and I, I want to go at his speed. Please pray for me.
I want to thank, I want to thank God because He's good. God is a wonderful God. I'm very loaded tonight with a lot of testimonies that I don't even know where to start from. You know, but God is good. Um, do you know at a tender age, the Lord saved my soul? I was only eight, um, sitting in the insurance hall department. The teacher teaching about Nebuchadnezzar and I thought I was in Nebuchadnezzar of my generation. And before she finished teaching, I ran to the altar. And she was still teaching, but the fear of God pushed me to the altar. And there I prayed, I didn't pray long, the joy of heaven filled my heart. I knew I was saved. You know, the Lord sanctified me later on and filled me with the Holy Spirit. And the Lord has been faithful to me. Uh, God is good. Um, I remember coming, uh, to the United States, not even knowing where I was going to. Didn't even have a dime in my pocket, nothing in my pocket at all. Um, I was so naive that, uh, the extra money after buying a flight ticket, someone actually paid for the flight. Um, I didn't remember to change that money to dollars. So I gave it to my siblings to go have fun and have, have Christmas. But I didn't know it was strategic, it was God's divine plan. He wanted to let me know that He can keep. I didn't have a scholarship when I came. I remember when it was time for, for scholarship, for tuition, I went to the park. Well, I lived with an aunt then who lived in a certain type of neighborhood, where you don't see people of my color, uh, around there. But I was not scared, I went there, wrote my hand up to heaven, I said, God, thank you. You've let me know where, where America is. And if this is all you can do for me, thank you. And do you know, that same week, I got an offer for a job? Authorized to work. Remember the, the man at the social security office said, well, you, you're not going to be authorized to work. You know that your social security card is going to say not authorized to work. I said, yeah, but I have prayed to God be the glory. When the card came, it said authorized to work. And the school gave me a job. And now God just gave me, I don't know, this God is wonderful. I had to write to the school and told, told them, hey, I've graduated, take your scholarship back. God is faithful. Do you know, in God's time, He married for me, gave me a beautiful wife and, uh, these, uh, wonderful children. I want to tell you that God is good. I, I remember, you know, um, the time I was, uh, almost getting close to graduating from school, uh, my aunt said, um, I, I need to marry. I said, no, that's not God's will for me. She said, well, if you don't marry for love, uh, you have to marry for your papers. I said, what is that? I said, I'm not going to do that. Aunt, you wanted to come to church because of me, you saw all the things God is doing and you said you want to worship God, now you want me to go marry for papers? Why do you want me to put a slap on God's face? She said, don't worry, I'm gonna do the papers for you. I said, God forbid, you're not doing the papers for me. And she sent me out of her house. I was there, uh, it was challenging. The government said, nobody can hire, uh, someone like me except they, they can prove that no American can do that job. You know, I was, uh, sent out of the job. I was in an apartment, the bills were coming, they didn't know anything about government shutdown. This was a recent shutdown at that time. Uh, there was no money, no job. But God is faithful. Says the oil will not run dry until the day God sends rain. And before the last thing will happen, the last money will finish, the same government told, told me if I will work for them, they will give me direct citizenship. And I thank God, when the government gave me direct citizenship, I looked at my student visa, it was just five days remaining to the expiration of that student visa. God is faithful. You know, when I look back, my aunt calls me and say, hey, can you talk to my child and let them know what they need to do so that they'll fear God and serve God? Wow, you the one who drove me from your house? God is good and God shows Himself in every generation. Children of God, I want to give God the glory. You know, I, I, I know Brother Charles is looking at me, your two minutes is almost up. Uh, Brother Charles, please forgive me, this is my first time in Madison. I want to thank God because, you know, one of my problems was how do I raise up my children uh, in this society, particularly being that the place we work, we didn't, we didn't have church there. It was very challenging. I know I had talked to, um, uh, Brother Charles, um, and Sister Tonia, and they, they prayed for us, encouraged us. But I want to tell you that God is good. The Lord has been walking through these children. And, uh, many times God reminds me, look at these children, look at what they do. Even in their class, in their school, it is wonderful. Uh, my daughter went to school one day and the teacher told her she has to put tattoo on her body and different things. She said, no, uh, my parents taught me that my body is the temple of the living God, I cannot put anything there. You know, the little one, he's just four, four years old, I was taking him to school and I was just meditating and he was doing his own meditation at the back. Uh, and he started talking out, I said, Nathan, what are you talking about? He said, um, Jonah, God asked Jonah, God allowed the fish to swallow Jonah and Jonah was in the fish belly but did not die. How did that happen? And I was shocked as a grown man and I've never thought about that. And I asked him, what do you think? He said, it must be God. When I came home, I told the mom, the mom told, I thought I was kidding. I, I called him, I said, can you go tell your mommy what you were telling me in the vehicle? And she opened her mouth and she was shocked. You know, God has been taking care of them, even where there is no church, the Lord is taking care of them. I am very grateful to God that we can depend on this God. And this God will, uh, help us out, uh, keep us here in this world and take us to heaven at last in Jesus' name. Please pray for us. Amen.
Sister Kristi and I are so happy. And we bring you greetings from our branch church in Wotton, New Jersey. We'll take our text tonight from the Gospel according to St. Luke, chapter 23, verse 54. Luke 23, 54. And that day was the preparation and the Sabbath drew on. We thank God for the theme of these special meetings, Day of Preparation. I think we all have a call to readiness. We have a call to be ready to meet our God, our Maker, the one who created us. He has wished and willed that we serve Him in truth and in spirit. And He's looking forward to a people who will spend eternity with Him in a holy heaven. When we talk of Day of Preparation, we can link it to several events in the Bible. Even in our present world, the Jews still observe a day of preparation on Fridays, like tonight. By sundown, they get everything ready. They prepare their food, their lamps, and they take enough rest before the Sabbath. And spiritually, it points to the believer's need to prepare for the coming of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. And as I mentioned earlier on, eternity. For the Christian, there are a number of things we need to do to adequately prepare to make heaven our home. The preparation to go to heaven is a serious one. It's not something ordinary. It's not what we think, it's not what we feel. It's all about what God wants us to do. And so if we truly want to make heaven our home, then we will make every effort to prepare and prepare well. And I believe that is the purpose of these meetings. Our prayer is that God will help all of us to search our hearts and be sure that we are truly prepared. It is good to be in church, like we, we have, we have already had wonderful fellowship. We, we had wonderful music played. We had the quartet sing, the choir sang. I can almost hear the sound of the trumpet, truly, yes. The coming of the Lord is so close. It's right at the door. But unfortunately, this is also the time that the enemy of our soul is deceiving many, many so-called Christians. And that is why we want to be careful. Because it's not just bearing that name, Christian. If we truly want to prepare to make heaven our home, then the first thing is to make sure that we are truly and genuinely saved. That we can stand before God as though we never sinned before. That we have a conscience void of offense before God and before man. And by the grace of God, if you are not saved tonight, God will save you. And by the special grace of God, if you are not sanctified this night, just believe that the Lord will sanctify you. He will fill you with the Holy Spirit and fire. If it is healing, whatever has brought you to this room as part of your preparation to make heaven, I want to assure you, people have prayed. And when prayers are offered, God moves. I can feel the presence of God here. And I know God is going to do something wonderful. God is going to do something glorious. We will leave this place happy. We will leave this place victorious. We have victory written on our faces by the special grace of God. To be prepared, after the Lord has saved us, we need to keep saved. We need to keep holy. And we need to bear fruit. The world has to see us as children of God. We are in this world, but we are not of this world. You see, that salvation experience that we talk about is not ordinary. It is something special. And when we have it, I will come to talk a little bit more about it. But when we have it, everybody sees. Everybody sees. And as part of our preparation, we need to be watchful and to be spiritually alert. A little over 2,000 years ago, on a Friday, like this Friday, a day of preparation, something wonderful happened in this world. It was the day our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, gave up His life, offered His body as a sacrifice so that you and me, we will have victory over sin. We read in Matthew 27, 51, "And behold, the veil of the temple was rent in twin from the top to the bottom, and the earth did quake and the rocks rent fifty-two, and the graves were opened, and many bodies of the saints which slept arose." That Friday was not an ordinary day. The events that took place, that the earth shook, that rocks were cracking, it was not an ordinary event. And the results, seeing dead people wake up from their graves was also not ordinary. The Lord had paid a heavy price for you and for me. A door had been opened, an opportunity had been given to sinful man that we can now call on the name of Jesus and receive deliverance from the works of the enemy. The writer of Hebrews puts it in Hebrews 10:20, "Hebrews 10:20, by a new and living way, which He have consecrated for us through the veil, that is to say, His flesh." That power which rent the veil, that cracked the stones, that shook the earth, is here tonight. That power is with us. It has been ushered into this world, and it is here. It is with us. That is why we can pray. And the power of God, that power, that same power that broke the stones, it is that power that delivers you and me from our sins. And I want to assure you that tonight, by the special grace of God, that power is going to bring a change to your life. If you are not saved, that power is available and is going to bring a change to your life. If you are saved and you want to be sanctified, whatever has been preventing you from getting sanctified, just note that there is some supernatural power in this house, in the air, that can break stones, that can shake this world. So whatever is holding you cannot come near it. Whenever Jesus appears, everything just goes down. So be rest assured, believe and trust that this night, you are going to claim your blessings from the Lord. If only we would pray. By the end of tonight, when you get up from your prayers, you will notice that something has happened to you. You will know. And the people around you, they will know that something has happened to you. By the grace of God, if you are a worker, when you go to work on Monday, when your boss sees you, he will know that something has happened to you. If you are a student, when you go to school, your friends will see you. They will notice that something, something wonderful, something marvelous, something has happened to you. You are a changed person. Many times, we struggle to take our stand. We struggle to stand out. We quiver. We call ourselves Christians, children of God, and yet we want to blend with the world. We want to look like them so we can work with them. But I want to assure you that tonight, God is going to give you power. God is going to give you strength. When you go back to school, when you go back to whatever you blend with, this time around, you will not blend with them. You will stand out by the grace of God. The wonderful thing about this power we are talking about is that it brings joy to your heart. It brings peace to your soul. And it gives you hope when you have that power manifest itself in you. Oh, you are a happy man, and you have hope of heaven. When you are walking about, you may be poor, you may be sick, you may be having any form of challenges, but there is one thing that you are sure of, that if Jesus comes, you'll go to heaven. That's why we are here. That's why we are gathered here. We are here to prepare to make heaven our home. It's not about the things of this world, it's about our soul. We want to take advantage of that. In 1986, I still remember the month, it was February. And I still remember the date, it was the 23rd of February. A group of us, seven of us, met in a classroom to worship God. And a young man by the name Julius came to the class to study. And we just extended an invitation to him, and then he joined us for the Bible study. And we extended a hand of invitation to him to come to church on the Sunday, because that day was a Friday. On the Sunday, he came. And by the grace of God, he heard about this new and living way. You know, before then, he belonged to a church that when he has problems, he goes to a human being and confesses his sins to him. But he heard about this new and living way, that when we have problems, when we want to be saved, when we want to be sanctified, when we have any challenge, we go to Jesus, because he has paid a price for us. And the power is within us. The power is still on this earth. This young man prayed, and heavens came down. And he got saved. When he got up, you could see the joy and the peace and the hope that he had. And interestingly, on his way home, at a distance, that was his testimony later on, the sisters saw him at a distance, and they said, "Something has happened to Julius." And when he got home, they could see the smiles, and he told them his story. You know, salvation is a true experience. When you have true salvation, you change. Salvation brings a change, a complete change, a total change. You cannot be saved and be sinning, no. When the Lord saves you, when the Lord saves you, you become a new person. We read from 2 Corinthians, chapter 5, verse 17. It says, "Therefore, if any man be in Christ, he is a new creature; all things are past away; behold, all things become anew." That young man used to sleep in a room where they store drinks, alcoholic drinks. That first night, he slept there. He never drank. He used to drink that alcoholic beverage as his water. The second day, he did not drink. I have known this man for about 39 years now. He doesn't drink any alcohol anymore. Salvation, it brings a real change. The Bible is true. When it says salvation brings a change, it brings a change. If you feel you are saved and you are still committing sin, then there's something wrong with that. But that's why we are gathered here. You see, we want to get the right thing. Want to get the true salvation so that we will be fully prepared to meet our Maker. We don't want to just, sometimes we pray, and then we sweat, and then we get up, and then we just feel that, oh, maybe the Lord has saved me. You know, salvation, when God saves you, the old life is totally gone. That is the standard. It is from the Bible. We want to be fully prepared. That's the first step to be qualified for heaven, to be qualified to see God. As we sang, we can almost hear the sound of the trumpet. The first and foremost thing we need to do is to make sure that we are truly saved. And it is not too hard to be saved. You just have to be honest with yourself. You just have to be sincere. You just have to acknowledge, if you know you don't have victory over sin, you know it. All you need to do is just tell it to Jesus. And then be sorry about the sinful things you have done and determine in your heart that if the Lord saves you, you will not go back into those things again. And believe that that power, that rent the rocks, that power is still available. It will deliver you from whatever is making you to commit sin. There is power in the blood of Jesus to deliver you from whatever is making you to commit sin. We want to get prepared. And so tonight, we want to start with salvation. Is my name written there? We said, "Oh, that will be," we sang, "Oh, that will be glory for me." Yes, William, is your name written there? Is my name written there? We want to make sure that we are refreshed. If you don't feel saved, God can save you. If you are saved, there is power in the blood of Jesus to sanctify you. You know, we just have to consecrate. That is why maybe you are not getting sanctified. It's because your one leg is probably in the world and one leg is in the church. You want to be sanctified, give all to Jesus. Surrender all to Jesus. We want to be fully prepared. We want to be ready to make heaven our home. The baptism of the Holy Ghost and fire is what gives you the power for service for God. When you have that, you will be stronger, you will be bold, and you will be useful to God. You need it, and I need it. It's all part of the package of preparation. It's not only salvation. You need to be saved, you need to be sanctified. The Lord says, "Without holiness, no man shall see him." So we don't just want to stay in our salvation. For this weekend, we want to make sure we plunge ourselves in the blood of Jesus. Can't we have a prayer meeting tonight? Can't we meet with the Lord tonight? That power is still available. Want to get saved, sanctified, filled with the Holy Spirit. And if you have any need, there is still power. God has power to provide your need. Let's come to the altar and present our situations to God. Let's make sure we leave this place ready for the kingdom of God. Our song for prayer is, is it 189? Thank you. Thank you.